As described in the attached staff report, which was circulated. So at this point, again, Jackie, please keep me on track here procedurally. But I think we can open, well, do you
I'll start with
You start with this staff report and then we'll formally open the public hearing. Great. Thank you.
All right. So to begin with the staff report presentation, can you all hear me okay? Or am I muffled with my mask on? Okay, we're getting thumbs up. So I'm going to keep rolling with this. Y'all let me know if I have to talk louder. And so we have received two plans from the Hagertys and their engineer, Robert Kribel. And to date, I haven't received anything in writing rescinding the first set of plans. And so we do have, according to the staff report that I have issued, plans A and B on the table submitted from the applicant. And reminder, in Lake County, all OWTS or onsite wastewater treatment systems must be designed by a Colorado licensed engineer. And they have to be installed by a Lake County licensed installer. The applicants and the owners have the burden of proof to demonstrate that the variance is justified and will pose no greater risk to public health or the environment. Then would a treatment system meeting the Colorado Regulation 43? The Lake County Board of Health shall determine if this has been addressed. Prior to granting the variance, Lake County Board of Health has the authority to impose site-specific requirements and conditions on any variance granted. We have submitted the both PDF designs for the original. What I'm calling option A. That one still stands because a lot of the details for how the system is designed and built transfer over to the option B. With the location changing for option B. Let's see. The option A that was submitted. It is requesting the following variances. A variance required for minimum 10-foot offset from the property line adjacent to Catherine Olsen on Highway 82. Row, and then a variance required for a minimum 100-foot setback from Catherine Olsen's well. That would be approximately 85 feet to the nearest point of the proposed STA. About the same distance from the existing pit affluent disposal area. That was presented in the engineer's report. We'll discuss that here in a minute. Variance required for a minimum 100-foot offset Hagerty well that will remain about the same distance the existing pit affluent disposal area. Now, according to the engineer's report, this location was chosen as the only location for the STA or the soil treatment area to be not impacted by the existing driveway and the existing pit affluent disposal area. The proposed location is the far west, far southwest corner of Hagerty's property. That location keeps the STA furthest from the residential structures and the Shooting Star Gallery. I'm sorry, Shooting Star Galleries outdoor eating area. In the staff report and in the engineer's report, the engineer included some diagrams of where those locations would be. The option B that was submitted, the variance included for this one need for, I'm sorry. The variance needed for this alternative design include less than 100-foot offset from Hagerty's well. The soil treatment area will remain approximately the same distance from the well. And less than 10 feet offset from the C dot Highway 82 right of way. According to the engineer's report, this location moves the soil treatment area outside the 100-foot well setback for Catherine Olsen's well. This site requires relocation of the Hagerty's driveway. This location may require relocation of the front door of the Hagerty's house to avoid foot traffic over the main manifold for the soil treatment area. This soil treatment area is in compliance with the required setbacks from the neighbor residential structures and Shooting Star Galleries outdoor eating area. Staff acknowledges and shares that this location. The proposed STA is impacted by the existing driveways, many years of compaction and greater area of the existing, current existing pit affluent disposal area, which creates challenges for the new system. It's not considered ideal for virgin soils, which is what we usually look for for new soil treatment areas per Reg 43. You can remove and remix compacted soils. Under sand filters, they have been proven to cause settling issues here in Lake County and other sites. But myself as Lake County staff, I would have to defer to the engineer regarding how to prevent the settling issues for the OWTS installation in this area. Again, they then have some more diagrams of the proposed areas. And here we see the options A and options B. As of today, I have received. See, here's the first notice from Joseph Fatter. Who's here in the room regarding the variance request. Says, honorable members of the board. Attached to will find an objection which is presented on behalf of my client Catherine Olsen relating to an unnecessary and unlawful proposed encroachment upon her well and upon the southeast side of her property. Introduction, Lake County Board of Health has received two proposals submitted on or sorry, submitted by or on behalf of Mr. And Mrs. Hagerty relating to a major repair for their onsite wastewater treatment OWTS. The staff reported Lake County Public Health Agency has identified these proposals as options A and options B. And exhibit identifying the option A and B is attached as exhibit one. Option A will allow require four variances from the Colorado Reg 43. Sorry, I'm out of breath with the mask. Variance for a minimum 10-foot offset from property lines adjacent to Catherine Olsen. Variance for a minimum 100-foot offset Catherine Olsen's well. Variance for a minimum one foot, 100-foot offset from Hagerty's well. Variance for 10-foot offset from C dot Highway 82 right of way. Option B will require two variances from Colorado Reg 43. Namely, variance for minimum 100-foot offset from Hagerty's well. Variance for 10-foot offset from C dot Highway 82. Contrary to staff report, neither option A nor option B comply with minimum design requirements of Colorado Reg 43 due to their noncompliance. With Rule 43, the Hagertys are now seeking variances from said rules. First objection, objection of Catherine Olsen. Catherine Olsen, a 92-year-old lady homeowner in Twin Lakes and native residents of Lake County objects to option A on exhibit one. Her objection is based upon the fact that said option will render the wells on her property as noncompliant under Colorado law and at an unnecessary risk of contamination. Proposed design or proposed updated design subsequent to October 12th. Robert Kribel, the engineer engaged by Mr. And Mrs. Hagerty has developed a replacement OWTH TS which will avoid the encroachment upon Ms. Olsen's well. This updated design, which is intended for construction, complies with the minimum setback requirements as set forth with Reg 43 in relation to Ms. Olsen's well. This matter was addressed within a letter directed to the Hagertys by Mr. Kribel on October 15th. A copy of which is attached in exhibit two A. Mr. Kribel subsequently directed an email to me on October 22nd, 2021, which states "The updated design that is intended for construction." It further recites, "The original design was a practical location for soil treatment area in an area not compacted by cars." However, the Hagertys are able to comply with the state requirement from the Olsen's well with the updated design. A copy of the above referenced email is attached as exhibit two B. On or about October 22nd, 2021, I received an unsolicited telephone call from Mrs. Hagerty wherein she expressed her regret that the matter of the major repair for their OWTS was disturbing to Catherine Olsen with whom they had a long-term pleasant neighborly relationship. She went on to say that she hoped the redesign intended for construction would alleviate Catherine's concerns. Parking and related non-issue within the staff report is the suggested. It is suggested that the Lake County Board of Health take into consideration that option B may require relocation of the front door to the Hagerty House to avoid foot traffic over the manifold of the STA. Due to the existing driveways, many years of compaction from parking and greater area of existing pit affluent disposal is lacking virgin soil. In response to item number one, it is suggested that no one would rationally consider that Ms. Olsen's drinking water should be contaminated solely to avoid the front door of the Hagerty home from being relocated. In response to item number two, it should be noted that apparently unknown to staff, the entire area between Hagerty House and Highway 82 has continually been used for parking throughout the years. There is no remaining virgin soil in the area. See exhibit three. The Hagertys contractor, I'm sorry, the Hagertys, their contractor and engineer will fully comply with all the specifications set forth within Reg 43. Thus eliminating any concerns of compaction or virgin soil. Applicable laws relating to this case, it is universally acknowledged that the granting of variances is regulated by Colorado Reg 43. The applicable portions of regulations relating to this case are 43 dot four N variance procedures, pages 23 through 25. And Table 7 dash one of Regulation 43, pages 43 through 45. Pages are attached as exhibit four dash A and four dash B. A longtime resident and practicing engineer in Lake County of impeccable credentials, namely Bill Claver PE has been retained on behalf of Ms. Olsen. He is very familiar with all the matters at issue before the Board of Health. Mr. Claver's report is attached as exhibit five.
You can, there's two page threes, you can disregard the clerical error. You can skip that.
Okay, this is a repeat. Conclusion, it is acknowledged that the major repair identified as option B for Mr. And Mrs. Hagerty will be beneficial to Twin Lakes community and should be approved. The alternative option A should be disregarded respectfully submitted Joseph Fatter. And then we've got exhibit A. And exhibit B. Which were the designs that were also shown in the staff report. Exhibit two A. It looks like this is the October 15th alternative layout. This was also included in all the emails that went out to the Board of Health for review. Exhibit two B. Here's, this was the email from Robert to Joseph Fatter, Catherine Olsen's attorney. Explaining the design changes. Do I need to read this one out loud? Because it says, "You should now have a copy of the alternative design, which is now considered the updated design that is intended for construction." Okay. And if there are no arguments over which design is then intended for construction. Then I would propose we just move forward looking at site B as the updated design that is intended for construction. So exhibit three. I'm guessing this is the front of the Hagerty's home.
I think this is the exhibit showing that there's been parking
Parking on there. And then this was the regulation. This one's Reg 43, the variance procedure where it then refers to Lake County government having or Lake County Board of Health having to adopt procedures for variance. And we do have our variance procedures in our Lake County regulations. Exhibit four B is the setback allotment that the engineer and the contractors must adhere to. Exhibit five. This one was a letter from Joe Fatter. No, to Joe Fatter.
This is one from the other.
From the other engineer. From Bill Claver, who's an engineer. And this one I have not read and I don't know the extent of it. So if you would like, I can certainly read it into.
I think it would be good, sorry for your since we only I think it would be good to just give us, you know, give us all time to absorb it.
And so from, sorry. Still got to go back one more page. Sorry. There we go. Dear Joe, at your request, I have reviewed the Hagerty variance hearing notice. The two Hagerty OWTS designs by their engineer, Robert Kribel, and the other related materials that you have forwarded to me specifically with reference to encroachments on setbacks from engine. Setbacks from neighbor Catherine Olsen. Following are my observations and conclusions. Background, Hagerty's proposed to upgrade their existing OWTS at 6533 East State Highway 82 in Twin Lakes. The Hagerty property directly adjoins Catherine Olsen's property on its west side. The Hagertys originally submitted a proposed OWTS design dated August 15th by engineer Robert Kribel to the Lake County Public Health Agency. That proposed design now denoted as option A by Lake County Public Health Agency or LCPHA would require a variance for reduced setback from the Olsen well. And also a variance for reduced setback from the Olsen property line. These setbacks for which variances would be needed are regulatory requirements set by 5 CCR 1002 Regulation 43. On October 5th, a Hagerty variance request based on the design option A was recommended for approval by Lake County Public Health Agency with the comment that this is the only option to keep this property habitable. Further, LCPHA had comments suggested mitigations such as well water filtration, water treatment, and annual well water testing requirements which could financially burden Catherine Olsen. Variance hearing date was set for October 12th, but was then reset for November 4th due to lack of sufficient notice to affected parties. Notice was sent on October 14th for the November 4th hearing. Kribel was notified by you on October 18th that the setback encroachments were unacceptable to Catherine Olsen. On October 22nd, Kribel emailed you and I about an alternative design, which is now considered the updated design that is intended for construction. This updated design denoted option B by LCPHA was dated October 15th. It would require no setback variance for either Olsen's well or for her property line. On October 28th, LCPHA issued a revised staff report for the November 4th Hagerty variance hearing that included both the original design and the updated design. The report referred to the two designs as options A and option B rather than as original and updated designs. And stated staff has reviewed both designs to ensure they meet minimum design requirements of Colorado Reg 43. Observations. One, under Regulation 43, four N, five prohibitions on the granting of variances, variance requests. Items A states, "No variance shall be issued where the property can accommodate a conforming OWTS." Based on the information presented by engineer Kribel, it clearly appears that option B would conform to Regulation 43 with respect to both the Olsen property line setback and the Olsen well setback. While option A is nonconforming with respect to both setbacks. Both the LCPHA and design engineer Kribel have clearly stated that option B conforms to Regulation 43 with respect to the Olsen property line setback and with respect to Olsen well setback. And that option A does not conform to those setback requirements. Therefore, it is clear that the issuance of a variance for option A is definitely prohibited by the statute. And the Board of Health should not be considering option A as a legal option at the November 4th hearing. No other issues are relevant with respect to considerations of option A because the Olsen setbacks are nonconforming and more conforming alternatives such as option B do exist. Nonetheless, some clarification with respect to some other items may be helpful. Under Regulation 43, four N, six, variances for repairs of failing systems, item B, it states. "The repairs or upgrades must be no closer to features requiring setbacks than the existing facilities." This eliminates option A as a repair or upgrade because the leach field would be closer to Olsen's well and property line. And further, it would be become nonconforming for both setbacks. Whereas the existing system is conforming relative to those distances. Under Regulation 43 seven, minimum distance between components of an OWTS and physical features. Table seven dash one note. For repairing or upgrading of an existing OWTS where the size of lot precludes adherence to these distances, a repaired OWTS must not be closer to setback features than existing OWTS. This footnote reinforces the intent of items two above. Even if the lot size in this case were to be too small to preclude adherence to prescribed distances in table seven dash one with respect to Olsen's well and property line. Avoidance of placing a leach field in previously compacted soils in previous parking areas. This concern is not a viable concern, especially so for a deep system such as in Kribel's design. Parking should not be permitted on top of any shallow leach field since soil compaction of shallow soils would decrease oxygen transfer to the leach field below. This is particularly true of the porous organic zone in the upper foot or two of topsoil. Kribel's soil logs show that about 10 inches of organic topsoil. But this topsoil plus the five or six feet below the soils. Five or six feet of soils below it must be removed to construct the proposed Kribel design. And all replacement soils would be unaffected by the previous parking area. Compaction of soils by vehicles is a relatively shallow phenomenon. By about four-foot deep depth, the additional weight of a vehicle is less than 15% of the overlying soil weight in the areas directly below the tires. And even less than to the sides or between the tire tracks. By the 5.5 to 6.5 foot design depths, the added vehicular weight is significantly less. Furthermore, the deeper mineral soils described in the lab test report in Kribel's design are likely much denser already and much less susceptible to further compaction than shallow soils. In my opinion, the soils at the depths below the sand filter almost certainly would have suffered little or no compaction at all from prior use as a parking area. The idea of excavating soils below a sand filter and replacing them in looser state is poorly considered and destructive fix to a non-existent problem. Sitting a leach field further than required from residences or outdoor dining area. These are not regulatory considerations unless design setbacks do not conform to statutory prescriptions of table seven dash one in Reg 43, another non-existent problem. The design engineer has stated that the updated design option B is the design that is intended for construction. I believe that the engineer's statement is important. He has discarded the original design option A as nonviable under Regulation 43. Originally, the engineer apparently overlooked the well-defined prohibition on issuing variances that can be accommodated instead of conforming designs. And when apprised of the fact, he corrected his design to conforming designs by submitting his updated design option B. He included his original design along with the second design because he chose not to spend unnecessary time to rewrite the entire report. Instead, just issuing the changed locations for the updated design more or less as an addendum to the original. He was not offering the original design as an alternative. LCPHA probably misconstrued his intentions there. Conclusion, option B is the only option suitable for variance at this hearing. Option A should not be considered because it does not conform with the requirements of Reg 43. And it would certainly be open to legal challenge. Reviewers qualifications, William Claver has a BS in geology and MS in civil engineering. He has worked for over 40 years as a geologist and civil engineer in the Rocky Mountain West, has managed soil and rock testing labs and has practiced the last 20 years as well as many earlier in Lake County where the largest portion of his work was on septic systems. He is very familiar with Reg 43 and its predecessors. Please call if you have any questions or concerns. Yours truly, William Claver. And then there's a certificate of service. I, Joseph Fatter hereby certify that on this fourth day of November, a copy of the foregoing response of Catherine Olsen in regarding staff report for Board of Health hearing was served upon the following individuals by email at the email address typed below by their name. Kayla Marcela, Jeff Fiedler, Crony Kayla Marcella, Jeff Fiedler, Cornelia Patty, Steve Boyle, Christina Floyd, Robert Crebel, Rick Hagerty, Jackie Littlepage, Ken Olson, David Olson, Carol Thompson, signed Joseph Fatter. And that appears to be page 21 of 21.
Jackie, thank you for working your way through that. But I think again, given that it was recently received, to just give it a full, full hearing here and give the chance to absorb it.
Yes, and then there was one other email received to the Board of Health from Ken Olson. And trying to find it here. Don't want to disregard it. Bear with me while I find it here. Stop sharing. This was an email received today at 1:44 PM from Ken Olson to the Board of Board of Health, Lake County. For the record, I wish to comment on this hearing matter. Point one, the staff of the Health Department has come up with options A and options B regarding the major repair to the Hagerty property OWTS. On page five of seven of the report, it states that both proposed engineered soil treatment area STA designs meet Colorado Reg 43 minimum requirements for repairs of existing onsite wastewater treatment system design, wastewater treatment systems with the exception of the requested variance setbacks. They do not comply with regard to option A. Did we just lose it?
Jackie, I can still see it.
Okay, we just lost it here in the room up on the board. So get that back. Let's see. Sorry, I lost my place. They do not comply with regards to option A. The approval of option A would be a direct violation of Reg 43, table seven dash one note. Found at the bottom of page 44, the attachment to this email wherein a repaired OWTS must not be closer to setback features than existing OWTS. Option A would reduce the distance from Hagerty's leach pit to Catherine Olson's well from about 120 feet to 85 feet. Catherine Olson's well is currently in compliance with Reg 43 with regard to the distant setback from Hagerty's current leach pit. If option A was approved, it will not be. This option will devalue Catherine Olson's property and make a 92-year-old woman out of compliance with Reg 43 and very potentially having to replace her well in the future should she shop, should she sell her property. Option A is not a viable option. Point two. The note on the enclosed attachment states components that are not watertight should not extend into areas of the root system of nearby trees. Historically, Catherine Olson's Wells east side fence line has let me move. Has had cottonwood trees whose root system would extend into the proposed option A STA and it would immediately adjacent to her east fence. This is also a reason for option A is not a viable option. This issue has placed my mother in a position of bearing needless cost to protect what she has and is currently in compliance with. Sincerely, Kenneth Olson. Okay. So now I am done with my presentation side of things.
Great. And we've introduced all the received public comment.
Those are the only public comments that I have received as of today.
Yeah. So we can go ahead and open the public hearing. For 46 PM on November 4th. I mean, do I need to read out the full? Again, I think we introduced that at the beginning of the.
Yeah. Jeff, I think what I would do is just ask everyone on Zoom and in the room if they'd like to raise their hand if they have an additional public comment.
Yeah, actually, before that step, I was just going to ask the Board of Health members if they have had any ex parte communications or have any conflict. And just note that Kim Jackson has refused herself as she currently works at at the department. But just quickly, I can see for myself, I've had no ex parte communication. Or any conflicts, just quickly go through the board members if we could.
Yep, Kayla Marcella have had no ex parte communication and have had no identified conflicts.
Right. Steve, Steve or Amelia?
Steve Boyle here, no ex parte, no communications.
Great, thank you. Cornelia?
Sorry, I had my mute off. I apologize. I'm, I'm, I talked to Colleen Nielsen because I thought I am renting from Ken Olson. And I'm not sure if that is a conflict of interest or not.
My, my personal feeling is in a small town, that is a relatively insignificant conflict. I don't know. Yes, I think, yeah, actually, I think we have. Bernie on Chris, yes, on this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, since Mr. Olson is not the applicant, I don't necessarily believe that the fact that Ms. Patty rents from him creates a conflict of interest in her participating unless she has in fact had conversations with him about this matter.
Well, I haven't had communication with him on that matter at all, not on Ken, with Ken.
Okay, thank you. I think feel comfortable proceeding. So yeah, we can proceed to public comments. And yeah, welcome additional comment. We've read in the full material and we'll have a chance to discuss it. But if you wanted to add or.
Yeah. Assistant comes on for hearing upon the application of Mr. Mr. Hagerty. And I understand they are on the phone as well as their engineer. So maybe we should hear from them as to which of the two designs A or B they wish to pursue.
Yeah, this is Chris again. I would say typically the applicant is, is allowed to make a statement either before public comment or and or after, in case there's public comment, they would have rebuttal to.
Hi. I, I guess we, after the last meeting, we never thought it would be anything but B. B was the one that we assumed would be our plan, option B.
We would be okay with disregarding option A.
Okay, thank you for that. Just wanted to check that was that heard clearly. I know we're working through our Zoom technology.
It's hard to hear, but it was my understanding. Want to consider option.
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
Yes, that is the intent that the original design has been discarded and option B is the current design.
And I make a public comment.
Yeah.
This is Ken Olson, and I just want to clarify that the statement made by on the page five of seven of the Department of Health Stat Report from from the Director of Environmental Health here on page five or seven, where it states at the top of the page, both proposed engineered soil treatment area designs meet Colorado Regulation 43 minimum requirements for repairs of existing onsite wastewater treatment systems with the exception of requested variances to set that, set that. Apparently that is not true from my understanding. And that option A is being eliminated.
I mean, my, sorry for the echo, we're working on that. And I, my understanding of option A is withdrawn. We almost don't need to spend time discussing its merits.
For the record, if I may, Joseph Fatter seeking for behalf of Miss Olson, she has an objection to plan B.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Fiedler, I would, I would agree with you that since the applicants and their engineer have represented that option A is to be disregarded and that they wish to proceed on option B. I don't believe the Board of Health needs to provide further consideration of option A.
Great, thank you. Any additional public comments from the room or from Zoom room?
There's the only computer on. It's, we changed microphones, so now it's this microphone.
Oh, so.
You can rehearse inside. You can turn on your speakers.
Okay, thank you. Oh, that's one. All righty, oh wait another second here for anyone to raise their hand or unmute on Zoom to make public comments. And I'm seeing none from the room. We're resolving a lot, okay. So at this point, we go into, into to close the public hearing and go into the board discussion. So closing the hearing at 4:54 on my watch.
Commissioner Fiedler, I believe you need to ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Now that I thank you for keeping me on track. So for my fellow Board of Health members, could I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I will make a motion that we close the public hearing at 4:54 PM.
Thank you.
Steve Boyle, second.
Thank you. And we'll do a quick roll call. Kayla?
I.
Great, Steve?
I.
Great, Cornelia?
I.
And I for myself. Okay, so we are closed. 4:54 still. Just, thank you. I'm going to into board discussion. So I'll open the floor to fellow board members.
So this is Commissioner Marcela, and I think going off of the information provided by the engineers and through the public comment section of this hearing to staff, I would feel comfortable and confident in making a motion that we instruct staff to process the application under option B, seeing as how it's been presented to us as being compliant with Reg 43. And that there's really not any need for us to consider a variance at this point. And I guess just for clarification, Chris, would that be, would that be appropriate or?
I, I would recommend that, that you allow staff feedback to confirm that, that staff agrees with the, the proposition that option B does not require any type of a variance. And as long as staff confirms that, then I think you're, you're on solid ground to move forward.
Option B that still requires variances. Let me open that back. So option B still requires the following variances, less than 100 foot offset from Hagerty well. Soil term area will remain approximately the same distance from the well and less than 10 foot offset from the C dot highway 82 right of way. So those have still been identified as variances that are required for the option B.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Did I just interrupt someone?
Nope, go ahead.
Okay, so I think, so Jackie, if I'm hearing you correctly, then the only variances that would be required here, I'm sorry, can you scroll back up to the top? Yeah. Okay. Okay, so it's from their own well. It's not an adjacent property owner's well. So they're not inadvertently increasing risk to their, they're absorbing that risk on their own because it's their well that is requiring the setback, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I don't feel like I have any further questions or need for any clarification at this point. So if, if my fellow board members don't have anything else, I would feel comfortable making, making a motion.
So Kayla, I think hearing no objection, I think if you wanted to make that motion, you can get a second and get it on the table for consideration.
Sure. I, Kayla Marcela, make a motion to approve option B, the variance as requested to allow a major repair permit to install a the modern engineered onsite wastewater treatment system as designed for option B on Hagerty, Richard K. and Denise A. property at 6533 East State Highway 82, Twin Lakes, Colorado 81251, parcel number 2901-190-09-004, account number R000391 in Lake County, Colorado.
You, looking for a second.
Steve Boyle here, I second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the table. Any further board discussion, comment, questions?
None for me, thank you.
It, I'm sorry to interrupt in terms of, for the discussion on that, I want to clarify whether there was just this one variance or if there's also a related variance for the C dot setback. I don't know if staff can, can address that because we just, I was under the impression that there was a second, that there were two variances that were needed for option B.
The setback to the C dot. is a Lake County requirement. There is a letter in one of these designs that the Haggartys had received from C dot that stated that they did not receive, they did not need a variance from C dot, so.
Okay, great. I just, I just wanted to confirm that. That, that's great. If they, if it's not needed, that's fine. I just wanted to confirm that before we proceeded and ended up finding out later that that needed to be addressed.
Yes, there, there was evidence in here somewhere that the, that C dot is forewarning them that encroachments from the highway, you know, at any future, here is the letter. If you'd like me to read this one, I, I can clarify on that.
I'm cutting your hair.
It says, greetings, Mr. Haggerty. I am the C dot row manager for this area. Your request for C dot's concurrence for a variance with Lake County to design and construct a septic system within the area of the county setback for your property came to me. Setback requirements are the responsibility of the local municipality. Ultimately, the decision to grant any sort of variance lies with them. C dot has no setback requirements for setback tanks or systems other than they are not allowed within a C dot row. We strongly encourage you to work with the county or local municipality that has jurisdiction in your area to confirm with their setback requirements as best you can. We also recommend you hire a professional land surveyor to stake the existing row on the ground prior to the final design and construction of the new septic system to ensure it will not be built within the existing row and become an encroachment. This reason for this is any future highway improvement projects that may require additional row or easements would require C dot to follow the Relocation Assistance and Real Property Policies Act nineteen-seventy Uniform Act. In the event that needs, in the event that need arose for C dot to acquire additional row or easement in this area, your septic system could be impacted. The best way to try and avoid this unlikely event from occurring would be to follow local municipals' required setbacks. However, even that does not offer guarantee that what projects may come down the pipe years from now. It is best advice that I can give you at the moment. With all that being said, I reiterate that C dot does not have a setback requirement for septic systems and your variant, your request for a variance lies between you and the local municipality. So unless you interpret that in a different way, it was presented to me as not an issue.
Okay, no, I, I think that's fine. And, and then just to confirm that, that there's no issue with the county's setback requirement then either, right?
To the best of my knowledge, there was not. Let's see, with Paul Clarkson still on here?
Jackie, he signed off.
Okay.
I, I guess just, I don't know if you're waiting for me to chime in on that, but was any of this referred to, to building and land use for a comment on the right of way setback issue?
Robert Crevel or Haggartys, can you confirm on that?
We have not had any discussion with building and land use, no.
Okay. Can we?
I haven't received any objections from them, but I did not specifically ask about that right away.
Can we, Chris, can we amend the motion to be contingent upon approval of building and land use for the right of way that abuts the highway?
I, I would be hesitant to say yes, because then depending on what their response is, it may, may counsel in favor of additional
Okay.
public comment on that. But I believe if there's no objection, I, I, I just want to make sure that there's not going to be something lingering. And I, and I, I hate to say this, but it's, it's the applicant's obligation to make sure whatever is done does not fall within that right of way. Because as was pointed out by C dot, it, it would create an encroachment in that right of way. So I, I guess, Mr. Crevel, does it, based on the designs that y'all have created, do you anticipate it encroaching into the right of way?
No, it will definitely not encroach into the C dot right of way. The only variance we're asking for is that it is not ten feet away from the C dot right of way. And no permanent structures will be placed within the right of way.
Okay, and that's, that's the typical setback, the ten feet anyway, in terms of for road right of ways, so. I mean, that, that would just be the, the standard anyway. So I, I guess the question is, in, instead of requesting a, a C dot variance, should this be construed as requesting a Lake County variance in terms of the ten-foot setback from the right of way?
Chris, I don't, I don't know if this would need to go through the Board of Adjustment for a variance or not, because they only deal with land use code and don't, I don't believe that building and land use permits, septic systems through the building permit process or the land use process, but I'm not one hundred percent sure on that.
That, and that's what I was going to say, that's, that's why really the, the issue becomes whether the need to avoid or not comply with the ten-foot setback on the right of way triggers the potential for needing to bring that before building and land use. So I don't know that that's something within the purview of the Board of Health, though.
So, so to bring it back for any amendment to the, to the motion today, thank you. I mean, I think Kayla's proposed amendment of making it contingent on a BLU, Building and Land Use Review, seems the right way to go for me, understanding that that might indeed trigger an additional step, but that wouldn't be under the purview of this Board of Health. So the Board of Health can complete its hearing today.
Yeah, I, I would say it, perhaps to, to wordsmith that a little bit.
And not has.
I mean, to, perhaps to wordsmith that a little bit to, to make it contingent on compliance with other, you know, building and land use requirements.
Yeah, thank you. Building and land use requirement sounds like better phrasing to me than just building and land use department, because I would anticipate that it might needs to go to another board.
Right.
Thank you. So to review the bidding, I think the motion on the table is that we approve option B. The, the Board of Health. And note that that is contingent on compliance with building and land use requirements.
May we assume that Paul Clarkson has already reviewed this and had no objection and no comment?
I have not asked him to review this. It wasn't in my purview that he needed to be a part of this. He's never had to review septic permits before.
No, so, so, so to be clear, I think the, you know, the almost certainty is that he has not, and that we would still need to run this by Paul Clarkson and the Building and Land Use Department to, to satisfy that contingency that was read in.
Can I, could I jump in here? I act, I actually did contact Paul Clarkson, and he was very nice, but he said it was not his department. I went through pretty much everything, and he said he referred me to the Board of Health.
Yeah, that's, I, I would think from the perspective of the, the onsite water treatment system, that's, that's correct. I doubt it was on his radar about the right of way issue.
I believe the Haggartys talked to him specifically about this variance, this setback. That was the purpose of the call to him.
So, I mean, I think unfortunately, given that Paul Clarkson or other representative from Building and Land Use Department isn't here, I think we should leave that contingency language in, and hopefully that's extremely straightforward to just confirm that understanding on his part. But I don't think we can assume that without him here. So apologies for that runaround and not having him still on. So again, I think we should leave the motion with that amendment for the contingency on review against building and land use requirements. So we have that motion on the table. Any further comment, discussion, questions from board members?
None for me, thank you.
Hearing none from Steve or Patty, I feel ready to put this to a vote. So again, the, the vote is on the motion to approve option B with the stated contingencies and then also contingent on review against building and land use requirements. So Kayla? Kayla, sorry, you cut out there for a second.
I.
Okay, I from Kayla. Cornelia?
I.
Great, Steve?
I.
Great, and I from me. Okay. So that is unanimous vote in favor. So thank you, everyone, for bearing with us on that.
Thank you.
People gather their, gather their stuff unless you want to stay for the COVID-nineteen update. Which you're welcome to, of course.
Thank you. Okay. Excuse me, can I make a, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is there something we should do at this point to contact building and land use? Or is that something that you guys will handle?
A great question. We, we can handle that. We'll make sure that we contact Paul Clarkson and, and see if there's anything further we need from, from you all and the applicants.
So I, I guess I'm a little unclear. Where do we stand now? Are we waiting for another meeting? Or I, I'm not sure. What, what happens next? Do you contact him, and if he says a okay, we're okay then?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that is the contingency, and Paul Clarkson is the one to, you know, tell us that we've satisfied that contingency. So we will contact him, you know, if, if not tonight, then as soon as we can in the morning. And we'll, we'll let you know as soon as we hear from him.
Yeah, that will likely be tomorrow before I can try to make contact with him.
Okay.
And then once we receive confirmation that those contingencies have been met and that the, well, all contingencies have been met, then we issue, I issue you a letter that the Board of Health variance has been approved, contingencies have been met. Once that official letter is released, I also issue out the permit and then construction can begin. But
Okay.
must wait until we receive those final confirmations that contingencies have been met and we can issue you those final documents.
For sure. Okay, and will, will you also email? So we'll know sooner than waiting for the snail mail?
Okay. Email.
All right. Thank you very much. I, I get it now.
Thank you for your patience with this process.
You bet.
All right, I think we can move on to next agenda items, which I believe was Colleen with a COVID update. If you're still hanging in there for that.
Jackie, we have a question in the queue.
Oh, do we?
Is, is that the the chat that, that? Is that the question about asking what Mr. Olson said? Or am I missing something else?
Yeah, as soon as I said that, that's when you had a reply in there. Sorry about that. It was the one from Kelly.
I, I'm pulling up the land code now to confirm that. And so if you want to proceed, I can circle back around with that.
And, and, and it was, it was an FYI, and he, he said, you know, it wasn't his, wasn't his turn to speak, and it's on Paul's desk, so I don't, I don't think we need to resolve that or dig into it here on this meeting today.
Agree.
All righty, well.
Yeah, I'll jump in. So I'm Colleen Nielsen. I'm the Director of Lake County Public Health Agency, and I meet with most of you on a weekly basis. And the big news that we have this week is that five and up has been approved for vaccination. The County Public Health Agency is holding a mass vaccination clinic on November thirteenth at Colorado Mountain College from ten to four, and we're hoping to capture everybody and anybody who wants a vaccine, whether they're starting, whether they need a second, whether they're eligible for a booster, as well as to that new population, five to eleven. We continue to see cases. We kind of plateaued, but at a high transmissive, at a high transmission rate. So we've been sitting above ten percent for over a week at this point. So we continue to monitor it. We continue to do contact tracing case investigation. And yeah, our big message is that, you know, the biggest tool we have in our toolbox right now is vaccination. We also ask the folks if they're not feeling well to go get tested. You can do that at St. Vincent Health, as well as on the weekend at St. Vincent, but through the state, there is a drive-up state site on Saturdays from ten to one. And so basically, really all I have is informational, unless you have specific questions, and I can go from there.
Okay, thank you.
No worries. Thank you.
Microphone.
Okay.
I, I just posted in the, the chat a response on the land use code comment. It, it does accept septic systems and allows them as a permitted encroachment in the right of way.
Okay. Okay.
Did you hear that question?
We should still just connect with Paul Clarkson real quick, I mean, that should, given that information, that should be pretty quick. But I think having said that we were. Run it by building and land use procedures. Any questions? There are none, we have removed the death of creepy, so we can move right on to given the board health meeting, discussing if you have a need.
I don't have any septic system. Things in the queue needing a variance at this moment.
So sorry, so getting used to border, so at this point, we could leave, open the scheduling and just schedule as we next need it.
Hey, guys, I would just say that when would you like to have that Board of Health structure conversation? In the sense of I'd like to have that kind of firmed up before the end of the year, if possible. Because when we come into the new year, we kind of. We have the board in place and that's what gets recorded, and then you can make a decision whether or not to appoint me as the public health director, I need to be appointed each year per statute.
Colleen, it was my recommendation that it be it be handled at the first meeting in January. Which is, I think traditionally, when the commissioners do make their annual appointments.
Oh, no, I recognize that, Chris, I mean, the Board of Health structure piece.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that that I was talking about that as well.
Okay, so then we are asking Steve Boyle to stay on till January to be part of that vote?
No. Not necessarily, I I was suggesting to wind up the Board of Health the the way it is now. And.
And start with the BOCC as a Board of Health come January?
Yes.
Okay, um, do we have to vote, do we do anything, or are we good, sorry, I apologize, I I miss, I might have missed a memo.
It, I don't think that needs to be voted on at this meeting.
Okay, that sounds great, I appreciate that, thank you.
Sure.
So it does sound like you guys will will figure out a meeting for January, and then whatever's left on the agenda, because I don't have it up in front of me, or we are adjourning, you guys.
Okay, I'm looking, sorry, confusion on who is unmuted here, looking for, I I put a motion to adjourn on the table, looking for a second.
A second?
Thank you. And go ahead, the vote to adjourn, Kayla.
I.
Great, thank you, Steve.
I.
Great, Patty.
I.
Great, and I for myself, so at 5:25, we are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you.